We've already done this, been here before. But I would ask if anybody would like to address the board in this evening's public comment. We would ask that you fill out a blue card, which are right outside the front doors, and hand it to somebody up here, and we'll get you on the schedule. And at this time, we'll open with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight, we have a, our yearly election for school board, new school board members is in April, and we have a slate of candidates. And as of tonight, I would like to start introducing the candidates each month. So as I call your name, if you're here, if you would stand to be recognized. And this is in ballot order. So Angie Reed, Jesse Lundkeeler, Lori Tritz, Kim Marie Graham, Don Hubbs, and Bruce Cantwell. Thank you all. Okay, Mr. Ackerman.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to start by saying, we originally had about 12 fine arts students, all-state students slated to be recognized tonight. We ran into a few conflicts with the date on this evening, so we're already working to get them in here to have a big hoopla in our final meeting, our final board meeting here at this facility coming up in February. So I just wanted to let you know that. But really excited about our honoring excellence, because we just wanted to spend a few moments thanking our board members. As many of you may know, every year, in the latter part of January is Board Appreciation Week, which this year is January 26 through February 1. We decided to bump that up a little bit to recognize our board here tonight. You should have received several gifts from a lot of our schools around the district. I hope you enjoy those. I know the schools enjoyed bringing those in on Friday. So they wanted me to pass along their thanks as well. And you can see behind you, the Early Childhood Center got creative and made you a banner just to thank you for all that you do. Just wanted to take a brief moment and read a statement off of the Missouri School Boards Association website, talking about this special week. Missourians benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,600 men and women from communities across the state. These public servants are elected by local constituents and do not receive compensation for their tireless efforts. They are the local school board members of Missouri. During the week of January 26 through February 1, 2014, communities across the state will honor the dedicated service of their local boards of education during School Board Recognition Week, as proclaimed by Governor Jay Nixon. The goal is to build awareness and understanding of the important function an elected Board of Education plays in communities and schools. All Missouri citizens are asked to recognize the important contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. Something in addition that I thought we would get ready to close honoring excellence tonight is some of our students from Liberty High visited a few buildings last week, and they put together a brief video capturing a few of our students and staff. If you would roll that for us.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you for leaving us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you for the countless hours you volunteer each month.
Thank you for your commitment to our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you for your vision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a board member.
Thank you.
And I would like to add that the young man with the Kansas sweatshirt was just for our very own brand ad. So at this time, we decided to do something a little different as well. Each of our executive leadership team members are going to bring to you an official plaque recognizing our school board members with us here tonight. So at this time, we'll distribute those. And we have Ms. Armitage's plaque and a lot of her goodies as well, and we'll make sure that she gets those. And I also had a note to let you know, there were a couple of schools that still need to get a few of their items in, so it may not be over just yet. That concludes honoring excellence for tonight. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Dallas. Now, this is a, this is a very humbling meeting every year. I'm seeing tears on my left hand, my right. The first, the very first time I experienced this, I remember being, before we came into the meeting room, and it was Bob Young and Evan Tripp were telling me that there were gifts on the table, and I said, oh, there are not. I thought they were messing with me, and we walked in, and sure enough, there were. And every year, it's just a humbling experience to hear people say thank you, because I know it's not always popular, the decisions we make from time to time. But we are truly doing what we think is best for this quick, fast-growing district. So to my fellow board members, thank you for what you do for the district. Okay. Moving on, we need agenda approval.
Hey, Scott, before you do that, can I say one quick thing?
Sure.
Sorry. This past weekend, Liberty High and Liberty North held their annual debate tournament. It's the, I've heard it, sorry about this, the video got to me. I heard it described by the kids throughout the state as the best in the state. It's supposed to be the largest. I heard a couple of contingencies actually say that their teachers and coaches told them that it's fourth to the largest in the country. And, you know, so you have the conversation, why is it so good? And it's extremely well-run. I'm a proud parent of one of the five kids that actually did help host the tournament. I had the great privilege of talking to both debate coaches during the tournament. And I just, I can't begin to tell you how well they represent the state, us, throughout the entire state, not just this tournament, but how well they have the kids prepared and how well they do and how well they represent the district. So although it's not part of honoring excellence, I thought this would be a good time just to do a shout-out for the debate program and let everybody know how well it went.
Very good.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you.
We're trying to get Charlene on.
Oh, are we missing Charlene? Oh, hang on just a minute.
See if we can get it activated.
Charlene is trying to dial in here. Makes for riveting television, doesn't it? Something tells me this gets carried.
Hello, Charlene, we are in open session.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. Welcome, Charlene. Okay, we are at 2.03 in the agenda. We need a motion to approve the agenda. I move the board about the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion on the agenda? Seem none, Sandra, will you call roll?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We cannot take a roll call vote with Charlene on the phone, so we'll do it that way. The next section, 2.04, public comment. Are there any other blue cards? If not, Richard Henderson.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. So I have, I want to do a brief introduction of who I am and who I am in the community, and then I want to pose some thoughts, and then I have a question that I'd like to articulate. So I'm the father of, I'm a geek dad, a kindergartner in the district. I'm surrounded by educators my whole life, my wife's a former educator, my mother, mother-in-law, sister-in-law, et cetera. I also, I come with an MBA in finance and entrepreneurship and innovation. I've done guest speaking on innovation. I work for a software company where I'm a program manager, and I implement multimillion-dollar programs doing enterprise software implementation. So part of what I want to talk about is technology. But it was interesting, a few days ago, my wife found something that was posted on the board website, I think, or maybe the district website. And it was, I think, an architectural rendering of a future school, I think of Epic Elementary. And it caused quite a bit of conversation in our family. We're obviously, as parents of a child in the district and some future children in the district, we're very concerned and interested in how this is going to work. And me, as a technologist, I'm actually very excited about some of the things that I think we're doing in Liberty Public School District. So some of the thoughts that I wanted to share were around kind of how this information came about. And while we haven't focused as much on what the board of directors, you know, the board has done to date, we are hyper-focused now. And when we went back through some of the notes and tried to understand how the committees were formed and things like that, you know, we're reassembling the past just because we weren't tuned in at the time. And so one of the things that I'm a bit concerned about is we had trouble finding in some of the closed sessions, meeting minutes for discussion that actually involved community members. So I was wondering if somebody could address that, like, are there meeting minutes from when community members were involved in the Epic School and how it's constructed? And then I think, just to get pointed with my question, it's mostly around two specific topics. One is students per classroom ratio, I'm sorry, students, yeah, students per classroom, students per certified teacher within those classrooms, and then also students per building. And I don't just mean epic, I also mean, like, the vision. Like, what does Liberty School District look like in three years, or five years, or 10 years, when my children are still actually at multiple phases in their educational path, hopefully in Liberty School District? And the other thing is the arts. I think some of the new ideas and education that I've seen hinted at, or maybe even solidly pursued, are patterns that have been implemented elsewhere. And I'm concerned that the arts, the fine arts, may not be as present a component of that as I, as a district constituent would like them to be. So if somebody could address how the arts play a role in that same sort of vision, three years, five years, 10 years, or as real as you can make it for me.
Okay. What we can't do, I mean, we can't have a debate or discussion here because it's not on the agenda. Sunshine law prevents us from adding things like this to the agenda at last minute. But what we can do is follow up with you on some of your questions, and Dr. Jungman and/or I will do that.
Okay.
What we can also do is then add it to the agenda next time so that we can answer those questions for the public as well, so they can know the answers to those questions.
I would publicly like to request that we do something like that, because that's important information.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Shay Henderson.
I promise we have different things to say. We got the same last name and the same address, but we have different things to say. Good evening, my name is Shay Henderson. I actually know a few of you from my time as a teacher at Liberty Middle School. Mrs. Armitage on the phone supervised my student teaching. I taught the sons of Mr. Evans and Mr. Brewer. And though we have not met yet, I live just a few doors down the street from Dr. Jungman. Hi. I say these things because it is my hope that these connections help my words to stay with you after I am finished speaking this evening. I left teaching a few years ago to be home with our children, and this year, I find myself in the position of a district parent. Our eldest child, Eleanor, is a kindergartner at Shul Creek. We truly adore her school and her amazing teacher, and her principal is breathing a sigh of relief at the back of the room. Since leaving, I have kept up as much as possible by talking to former coworkers, following quick news, and reading board minutes from time to time. I even check out and enjoy reading the articles and clips that Dr. Jungman posts on Twitter. Here's where I'll cut to the chase. There are phrases that I read in district documents and board meeting minutes that concern me. The facility master plan presented in July includes the phrase, "Investigate differentiated staffing for maximum efficiency." I'm highly interested in the intended use of the phrase differentiated staffing. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that the fastest way to trim a school district budget is to reduce staff or hire less expensive instructors. The information for the levy issue, for which I voted yes, stressed the importance of minimizing the square footage per learner. Though I get and understand our bonding capacity issues and want kids out of trailers, I don't necessarily love the idea that my child's elementary school will soon have the ability to house nearly 1,000 students. At some point, there must be a limit, I would hope. The strategic plan uses phrases like, "reduce instructional cost per learner," and "create blended learning opportunities to maximize staffing," and "implement needs-based staffing protocols," which is a phrase that's tied directly to a December 2013 timeline for recommending reductions to achieve targeted staff-to-student ratios. The strategic plan also references the customization of instruction for individual learners through the use of digital tools. Does this involve students working primarily at computer terminals? Because that's how I interpret it. My main question is this: In layman's terms, what is the district's visions for what my child's physical classroom looks like three to five years down the road? To clarify, as an elementary student, how many kids are in her classroom per certified teacher, not per adult, but per certified teacher? Are they in individual classrooms or in large spaces with 75 children, like the fifth graders this year at Alexander Don offen? What percentage of her day do you plan for her to spend in front of a screen of one kind or another? High school is a completely different ballgame, and I get that, but I can assure you that I know middle-level parents with these same questions. Are we headed toward classrooms with too many students, too few teachers, and too much time at a screen? I think technology and innovation are wonderful and completely necessary, but not if they come at the expense of human interaction and classes taught by certified teachers. Nobody likes an unintended consequence. I look forward to any information you can provide, I realize it will come at a later date, that would ease the mind of not only this parent, but that of many other parents and teachers in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Dr. Jungman and I will follow up on that. That's right up here. 2.05, committee and organization reports. None.
No one is present this evening from the Audit and Finance Committee, but they reviewed the information as each month.
They do every month.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. 3.01 to 6.03, the consent agenda. Before we make a motion here, I'm going to read the statement that explains how we do this. And I'm trying to get the, here we go. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a comment, provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure, to assure, to assure an extensive and thorough review. I need my glasses tonight, I'm sorry. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So do we have a motion to approve consent?
Move we approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 6.03.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments on consent? Seem none, Sandra, will you call?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good, thank you. I don't want to ask you to call roll, how do I phrase that?
Call for the vote.
For a vote, okay. I'm going to be doing this all night long, so I might as well get it right now. All right, school board policy update, 7.01, policy revisions. We have some to approve on second read, do we not?
Yes, we have two on second read that were out last month. These are disrecomendations from MSBA. And then we have a few on first read.
Very good. So recommended motion for approval is to, I don't see it here, is it not written out?
Let me give it a chance.
DA, DI would be the second read.
Yeah, I didn't know the motion was written out. It's not.
I don't see it.
So.
I'm updating now, and it will be there.
Okay.
Come on your way. I'll go ahead and do mine. Let me do.
Sure.
On move that we approve on second read, board policies, DA and DI.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Seem none, Sandra?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On the first read, I would just, the only one I would point out is JECB, which is a mission of non-resident students, and that's a modification that MSBA has just pushed our way based on the lawsuit and the KCMO Supreme Court ruling that would allow transfers to take place. This is, allows that to play out, but also protects the district because it requires upfront payment, which we haven't allowed that, transfers to happen to begin with. But now it calls for a payment process that requires upfront payment from the sending district, so we protect our system in case there would be financial constraints coming our way. So that starts here, and then the second piece, they will be pushing a policy to us that would deal with class size. And it's a little bit in the gray area of whether or not we can set class size limitations and capacities. Our interpretation of the law says that we can, so that will be our recommendation. And we'll have a policy in the next few months around how do we structure that. We're trying to be consistent with districts in the region. That one's not quite ready yet, but this gets us in line, and it's not for approval tonight, but it at least gets us in line as we think about what's the financial process if this was to play out in the fall. So just so you know, that's a new one coming our way, just because of that Supreme Court ruling.
Very good. And there are two administrative, or three administrative procedures.
Yeah, there's some procedures down there for your review also.
Yeah. They do not require action.
They do not. Correct.
Okay. And you have a discussion on policies and procedures. If not, that will take us to Section 8, unfinished business, and 8.01, renaming 650 Connoisseur of this facility.
If you remember, last month, we brought forth the first read of that, and this will just be the second read, and also we'll dig into some of the documents that you've seen in work sessions, been part of the elementary task force work over the last six to seven months. And I'll ask Mr. Brewer and Dr. Schmitz actually to step to the podium and answer any questions that you might have as we walk through these. And these are documents that I think people could access that might help them see a little bit of the work that's been done over the last few months, and we'll go from there. But the first piece would be just the renaming component as the action item, so. And we will need board.
Move that now.
Very good. We'll just say a few things and then.
Yeah, you can wait and do that at the end if we want. So we'll, we'll go through, the Epic draft documents are posted on your screen and, or on your board file, and I'll let Mike and Michelle speak to those.
Excellent. We have the expert right here, but let me just say publicly how much I appreciate Dr. Schmitz's hard work. She has been working day and night in many ways, because if you know her, you know that she doesn't let any balls drop. And she's leading Shul Creek, and I feel we'll help her as much as she needs, but she is leading Shul Creek very successfully, and then also planning for Epic Elementary, or for, I mean, if the board approves that name, but that's kind of what we've been looking at as a name for our innovation elementary school. But you'll see that we have various documents in front of you to help you understand the planning process. I also want to say thank you to the Innovations Task Force for helping come up with ideas and plan. They've been meeting over the last couple of years, or last year, really working on the plans. And so there's a communication plan, application procedures, all detailed out there, staffing plan, calendar. Dr. Schmitz worked on the website all day today, and it really has an awesome website. I think we found a new webmaster, too, so we'll put it on our plate as well.
She could do it all.
She could do it, I can tell you that. So a lot of what was brought up in open session definitely would be answered, at least in some ways, with some of these documents, but we'd also love to sit down with anybody who would be wanting to sit down with us and hear about the planning process. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Dr. Schmitz, and then also we can answer any questions. Do you want to say anything about the planning process?
Well, I would first say that I think it's a really exciting time in Liberty. You know, we're changing the face of education. And I secretly wish my kids were back in elementary school, because I'm so excited of the opportunities that our kids are going to have in Liberty Public Schools. So we've been able to go to many schools across the nation and look and see about best practices, and so we're going to be able to capture that here at the possible named Epic Elementary.
I think our charge, Kim Marie was a part of that team from day one, I think our charge to the team was, we're going to open a new elementary site in a unconventional piece of real estate. How would you reshape your education experience for the elementary kids? And it was parents and teachers and administrators that were along that process. And it came up with the framework, okay? And the framework is the first page in your document, which is really focused on creativity and a project-based kind of learning environment. So empower creativity, equip students, and engage communities become the foundation of the framework. And you can really dig into what that means, some of the outcomes that we're shooting for for kids, and then what it means and our goals for those students as they leave here in the document. You know, personalized learning, we want these kids to be able to work independently and interdependently. This is not going to be a purely technology groups of kids in labs sitting in front of screens. Are we going to use technology on a daily basis? I think undoubtedly, I think we're going to do that in all of our schools very soon, if we're not right now. But it's really as much about the hands-on opportunity and experience and the project-based learning environment and the deeper relationships with kids that we think we can create by not just standing and delivering quite so much and using different tools to customize the environment. And that's what the parents and the teachers talked about, that we can use these tools for certain aspects, but they are just tools. It's really the teacher and the educational environment and the real-world application that we're shooting for. So if you dig into the framework, you're really, you're going to hear a lot of those things tied onto a lot, community partnerships, you're going to hear us talk about personalized education, but we want kids to be critical thinkers, we want them to be creative, we want them to be problem solvers, and we want them to be able to show their learning on a regular basis. And if you get into the calendar, you're going to see the parent-teacher conferences, and the traditional sense are replaced with a, what we call kind of a, them exposing us to their learning. So three times a year, parents would be coming in, and kids would be showing their learning in action, whether that be in small group or in large group. And we think that's going to allow for a much richer dialogue with parents and a much richer experience of kids being able to really show what they've learned. We'll get into more details as we get into Parent Information Nights about what that schedule looks like. We kind of showed that in a work session, you know, of formation time, expedition time, all the different things that we, exploration time for our kids, and how those look different than individual content delivery, right, which is our typical process of, we have science time, or we have reading time, or we have math time. How can we get those integrated? And that's the real dialogue, is an integrated curriculum, where the kids see how to tie those things together, and they produce outcomes and products that show that they know how to tie those things together. So that gives you, and you've seen the framework for several months now, but that gives you a little bit of understanding of the framework. The guidelines, which are kind of the bigger questions, school, time, transportation, calendar, all of those things are outlined in Page 2. And what we will be doing is, you can see on your desk, a communication process that Dallas and Mr. Brewer and Dr. Schmitz have been working on, starts with a staff application launch this week. So there'll be an opportunity for people to start applying to teach here. There will also be the website launch for parents and the community beginning next week, that's nearly prepared. We'll have website feature stories, we'll have videos, we'll have parent automated phone calls, we'll have a push piece that goes out to every elementary family, and then we'll be having the community awareness nights. And we've got at least three of those already scheduled, and we'll, and we'll schedule more if we, if we need to. need to, but we'll have three of those scheduled in this room to let us dig into the details of each one of these things, let people ask questions, and then begin the enrollment process in mid to late February. So that kind of gives you an idea of the timeline and the processes. We know that we're targeting 300 students in the site, and it's to be opened up across the district based on approximately a 5% allocation to each site, so everybody's got equal opportunity to enroll. It'll be a lottery system where we don't control that, we put everybody's name in a hat, and we don't necessarily put it in a hat, but we have a third-party consultant that does that off-site, but they run an official lottery process, and then they send us back the results and we place those kids. And you'll see the details in your documents, and we can answer any questions you have, but the goal is to place families and not just individual kids as possible, but there will be times when families get split just because of potential capacity of enrollment. So we'll deal with those as the practices play out. The things that we will ask for you to approve are really the one document that is different than what we currently do in practice. All these are administrative procedures, just like we would have for opening any new site, but the calendar's different, all right? The start date's the same, the ending base calendar is the same. There's a few different things in professional development because we think teachers on this site are going to lead, a little bit more time for staff development. The regular school day's going to be just a little bit shorter for kids, but it's going to have a mandatory summer session. So it will be extended by approximately 16 to 20 more days if you want to come to this site, and that's what you're signing up for. So that will make up for the...some of the time lost, and it'll also expand some of the time, so it'll be a longer school year than the base school year for the students that attend.
It'll be a similar number of total minutes.
Similar, just a few more than the base calendar, but it's not as many in the regular calendar, but it will be captured in the summer calendar. So the total minutes is up maybe 20 or 30 hours from the regular calendar this year.
We're still meeting state requirement.
Still meeting state requirement for a number of hours for sure, and exceeding it like we do on all of our sites, actually. And then you'll see the lottery process, that kind of formalizes, you know, here's how we take application, and it'll be an online application process. People can also come into the enrollment center and put their application in that way if they're interested. But our goal right now is to get information out in the next 15 to 30 days so people understand what it is, am I interested in it, and then I can fill out the application process. And then through March, the lottery process will take place, and we'll communicate back out to the families who are selected, if they have received a spot, and if there's a waiting list, we'll identify that and let those people know that they're on the waiting list also. And that's kind of played out in the process. The calendar is the fourth document in there, and I've kind of talked about that, but it's really just our base calendar plus a few extra days with just a few shifts for the exhibition events of learning as well as the professional development. And then you have actually that summary of Epic attendance, contract hours is another document in there. You'll also see a staff allocation, which I think is important and also kind of speaks to some of the questions asked tonight. There will still be an art teacher, there will still be a PE teacher, there still will be a music teacher. Now, will they be here five days a week? No, you can't do that with 300 kids because it's a smaller site. So they'll be here, and they'll be built into the academic experience for kids, but we will still have those things and services offered for the kids on Epic site also. And then you'll see the primary allocation for teachers, the intermediate allocation, and then you see a little bit of a picture of what the site looks like. Our goal is to run this as efficiently as any other site, it can't be at added cost, right? So we're not going to run it to take away per pupil expenditure from any other site to run it at that same efficiency or better. So we're going to shoot to do that, and this is the staffing plan that allows that to happen. So that kind of gives you a picture of how many seats, and then you'll see kind of the design that the task force has walked through this building with architects and kind of informed that process along, as well as teachers and administrators are saying, if I was going to recreate the learning experience for these kids, here's how I would do it a little differently. And we are working a lot more on team teaching, not individual kid with 20...one teacher with 20 to 25 students like we have in most of our elementaries. It's going to be pairs of teachers working in collaboration, and that's why there's going to be some extensive additional professional development, because they're going to have to work more in line with everything they do. Allows us to take advantage of strengths of multiple teachers for kids, and it also, I think it allows us for a deeper professional growth environment when our teachers are working with a fellow colleague on a regular basis. So the site's designed that way. So it's got a learning lab for kindergarten, a learning lab for fifth grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, which would be basically two classroom teachers per learning lab with 25 kids per teacher, which is similar to the ratio that we have for third through fifth grade right now. So that gives you kind of a site, this will become the multipurpose location so that we can have PE, we can have exercise going on on a regular basis, and this will probably be the place where we end up serving lunch on a regular basis also.
Can we talk about how this program, though, it really stemmed from Vision 2020? So this process has been going on almost two years. So this is not just a planning process that's happened in the last six months. The task force that has been in charge of putting Epic together and this new process stemmed from that group. And so we've also, as a board, had taken on a very unusual role. Normally, we're not as involved as all of us have been. David, you know, played a huge role in Vision 2020. Kim Marie is now playing a big role in this task force. I did a lot of traveling with the administrative staff, which is very unusual for a board because we took a vested interest in this and wanted to make sure that the planning process was well thought out and that we could talk to it. And especially putting a levy out there this year and supporting it and making sure that we all understood what this was going to entail, that we have really have a vested, I guess, vested interest in this. So to answer some of the questions that we keep talking about, a couple of months in the planning process for Epic, this has been years. And this has been well documented through our work sessions, through travel schedules, through task force that we have additionally participated in outside of just our normal board meetings that we have invested in process.
Well, I think, I mean, and one of the things that it centers around is that initial conversation with Vision 2020, and I know David's been a part of this since day one, is if we were to continue to do business as we are doing business last year at the beginning of the school year, five to seven years down the road, and try to create the same square footage per kid, the same staffing ratio per kid, now, we're not saying blowing up classes, we're talking a fraction of one staff member or two kids per staff member in the system. But if we tried to recreate the system that we had right now at that time, five to seven years down the road, and pay everybody the same benefit structure, pay everybody the same salary system that we have in place, because our number-one goal in all of this is to attract, develop, and retain high-quality teachers. That is the foundation of our system, period, and that's our biggest financial exposure. So we want to protect every dollar from facility acquisition and from, you know, space need to using our space more efficiently, because if we were going to replicate that system, it was going to take a levy that was $3 more than our current levy. So the discussion from Vision 2020 was, how do we use our space different? How do we use our time different? And some of the things that have rolled out of that, Liberty Leeds projects throughout the district, Epic Elementary is another one of the offshoots of that conversation of using our space more effectively, serving our kids in different ways, bringing people along in the process, but making sure that we're protecting our resources for our most valuable resource, which is driving it to instructional environment for our staff. Because if we lose the competitive edge of being able to attract, develop, and retain high-quality teachers, we will, I think, go down rapidly in the system. And we'd already been in a situation where we had frozen schedule twice, and if we didn't think about staffing numbers and those things. And right now, we are just getting to where we are in line with our peers. If we can hold staff flat, growth flat this year, we'll be in a same staffing...the same staffing numbers as our peer districts. So Blue Springs, Park Hill, and Lee Summit are the ones that we use as our local peer comparisons. And you'll see that in the district report card here in just a little bit, that shows that data point that we did have a lot more teachers than they did. And having more is a good thing sometimes, but when it ends up and causes you to freeze schedules over a long period of time, what is the impact to the system? Because you may not be able to attract those high-quality people, and if you did, can you keep them? Because they're going to go to a system next door that could fund the schedule, because a competitive schedule doesn't mean anything if you can't fund it on a regular basis.
And the results indicate that we aren't getting any better results with the people.
Yeah, and the data, I mean, I think in that district report card piece is an important thing, that we're not at the top of the list when it comes to that peer set of districts. So there's opportunities. I know, David, I think you were going to speak to something in that.
Well, yeah, I guess, Michelle, I haven't had kids in your building, but I hear great things from your leadership and what's going on at Shoal Creek. I have been in Shoal Creek with my kids for quite a number of years, also been in Franklin and Ridgeview over the years. I feel pretty good about the experience they had in our building. So when you say you kind of would like your kids to go back through, which your kids would not want, but...
They're in my building.
It looks like it's going to be a lot of fun.
Are there some things that you think we're going to be able to test out in this environment and then ripple through the rest of the buildings that are going to be useful? Can you kind of help? Because you and I haven't had a chance to talk about this topic, and I'm excited to hear your opinion.
You know, when you walk into a classroom now, you see the rows of desks, you know, and sometimes they're in pods, you know? So when you walk into Epic, you're going to see groups of students working on projects, you know, you're going to see experts coming in from the community to be able to help kids in their learning. And so I think the main difference is, you know, the whole day is going to be constructed around the student and their learning and hands-on, you know, it's going to look completely different. You know, we will have some times where kids do use technology during the day. Now, they won't be sitting behind a screen all day, you know, so we're going to couple that with good teacher instruction, you know, and we view technology more as the tool, you know? So parts of the day will be spent with technology, parts of the day will be spent with collaborative groups and project-based learning.
Are there things that a teacher is going to have to do differently in this building than what they've been doing up to this point?
Yes, absolutely. When you walk into a building now, there's one teacher with 25 kids. In this building, you know, we're going to have teachers working in teams, and so they'll be able to meet the needs of the learner, you know, as team members. They'll be able to talk through some things that typically they're not able to talk through during the day. They have to wait for the plan time. But, you know, if they're doing something or a student has a need, they're able to talk right then and work as a team through the whole process.
My kid might have two teachers that are interacting with them throughout the day rather than just one as well?
Yes.
And when you have two teachers or more working together, there is opportunities for differentiation or really customizing the learning experience based upon what the child needs next. And that's probably the biggest thing is just in time learning. When the child's ready for something, you're ready to help them with that and coaching them with it and being there shoulder to shoulder with the kids. And so in some ways, teachers have an opportunity to develop closer relationships with kids because they can work with small groups while other kids are doing other projects. And I think we've experienced that at the high school with some of our teachers that are really embracing some of the things you can do of utilizing technology to some degree, and sometimes it's not technology.
Very good. Any other questions?
I don't see anybody have questions for Dr. Schmitz or Mr. Brewer. As we proceed down this path, obviously, our work right now is to make sure you are...I mean, you've been in this process for a long time, but we want you to see what are near the final drafts. The thing won't, like I said, ask for naming this week, so that allows us to go to press with some of the publication materials, the website, all those things, and then next month officially adopt the calendar. But this is the calendar that we would be publicizing as pending board approval, that we would be moving forward with so that people can see it and understand that if I'm going to go through this process, this is what I'm signing up for. And once again, it's a completely voluntary experience. It may not be for every kid, and if it doesn't fit, that's okay. We have your home school to be at right now, but if you are interested in going on this journey with Dr. Schmitz and her team, I think it's going to be a great journey and great for kids, and inform some of our work as we move forward, so.
Very good. All right, the action item we have before us, the recommended action is, I move the board rename the 650 Connoisseur facility to Epic Elementary School. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, Sandra?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
Very good. That takes us to 8.02, new course proposals.
Dr. Williams is here to give you an update.
Good evening. You have before you the four CAPS courses that are for second reading, as well as seven courses that are here for first reading. What I've done is summarize the large PDF document of 100-plus pages, just to give you the title, and Sandra posted that. The seven courses for first read tonight are Sociology II, Physics, AP Environmental Science, Physical Science, Accelerated Chemistry and Physics, AP Statistics, and Chamber Orchestra. The State Board of Education adopted the new assessment plan last week, and it eliminates the physical science and, of course, assessment. I mention that, Dr. Gentman will be speaking more about that later, but I mention that because it may impact the final slate of courses for second read. I have to talk to some more folks, some teachers and administrators in the building to have a final plan for that, but it would likely impact the second-read science courses that you would have next time. And the four CAPS courses for second read are Engineering and Advanced Manufacturing, Global Business, Medicine and Healthcare, and Technology Solutions. Any questions about the courses? This document was sizable because both advanced placement courses have the advanced placement course descriptions attached to them, so that adds about 40 pages per course.
Yeah, and we've had some extensive discussion about courses as well in the last couple of months.
It was actually kind of interesting to revisit my own environmental science knowledge, just so you know.
So we have one action that we are being requested to consider tonight, and that is, I move the board adopt the four Northland CAPS course proposals as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the Northland CAPS proposal? Seeing none, Sandra?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
So then that leaves the seven that we will consider for next month. Any other questions? Dr. Williams on these?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, that takes us to 8.03, Series 2004 Bond Refunding.
We do have a couple of financial issues tonight, the Series 2000 bond refunding, which was started last year, and I'll turn it over to Carol to walk you through that process and introduce our guest to make that happen. We also have the 9.02 lease revenue, so that generates the funds for us to do the projects that we've already approved. That comes through the levy work, and I think he'll be updating that also. So we'll circle back to 9.01 after he's done, just do both of those back to back.
All right, so we'll do Section 8.03, then 9.02, so that Mr. Bricker can take care of all of that together.
I'll turn it to Carol.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gentman, and I would like to invite Greg Bricker to the podium, please. Greg is with George K. Baum and Company, our investment banker. He's the executive vice president there. And with regard to our first transaction, this is, if you will, refinancing our mortgage. So much like many of us took advantage of reduced interest rates to reduce our obligation over a long period of time, we're doing the same thing with this second leg of the refinancing of the Series 2004. And Greg, if you want to go ahead and talk about some of the detail of that, and we're anticipating an excess of $800,000 in savings over the life of the payments resulting in that.
Thank you very much, Carol. The last time you saw me, I may have looked a bit shell-shocked. We started a process, well, last April, to refinance a bond issue done in 2004. We actually were looking to issue at one point in time probably about a $16 or $17 million issue at the June board meeting. The Federal Reserve took it upon themselves to start the process of increasing interest rates in May of last year, and the market ran very hard, very fast against us. It created one of the more difficult markets that I personally have been a part of in 27 years. We elected to split this refunding into two pieces. We did go ahead... of in 27 years. We elected to split this refunding into two pieces. We did go ahead and bring to market in June of last year about an almost $10 million bond issue to refund a portion of the '04 bonds. We locked in $1.9 million of savings with that transaction, indicated that we would be back in early 2014 with a second bond issue to refund the balance of that 2004 issue. The funds for both of these transactions will be used on March 1st, 2014, to pay off the 2004 bond issue. We don't really need the money from either of these two transactions until March 1st. The transaction that we did last summer, we put the money into a bank account, earning practically nothing for about a nine-month period of time in anticipation of the March 1st date. This financing that we're talking about tonight, we will literally close this transaction within probably 48 hours of the date that the funds will be used to pay off the old bond. So it's gonna be a just-in-time refunding. I think at the best point in time, when I was running numbers last April, the combined savings on the '04 issue might have been somewhere in the $3.25 million range. We locked in $1.9 million last summer. We're looking at somewhere in the mid-800 range right now, so that's $2.7 million. The schedules that you're looking at today were actually generated on a Thursday in preparation for a Friday update memo that was sent out on Friday, January 10th. The morning of January 10th, which would have been following the Thursday where I generated these numbers, there was a monthly jobs report released that actually was very favorable to the market. So I'm in much better mood since then, or really than when I was here in June. But the numbers you're looking at, I do believe, will come in stronger, we will come in stronger than the numbers you're looking at. As soon as I say this, the market will go against us. I plan on being at your February 3rd, is that a study session?
Core session.
But you are able to take action at those sessions if given proper notice. I will be looking for an action item that evening to accept final interest rates on the balance, the last refunding of the '04 issue. And I don't know that we'll hit $3 million in aggregate, but we'll be somewhere, I think, in the 28 to 29 range. Just as a bit of a recap, we did two refundings to go after an '01 bond issue that collectively saved about $4.6 million. So 4.6 and almost 3, we're pushing $7.5 million almost in savings between the four refundings. So that will certainly be welcome news to our debt service fund.
And Greg, we're looking at approximately a 3% reduction in interest rate. Would that be accurate?
Right now, we've got average interest rates on the old bonds of somewhere in the 5% range. We're looking at right now an average interest rate somewhere in the 2.2% range based upon January 9's rates. So yes, nearly a 300 basis point reduction.
And just a reminder, too, that with our loan obligations, we can only refinance at the call date, which typically for ours would be the 10-year date. That's why in 2014, we're refinancing a 2004 issue.
And then looking back, just FYI, for some reason, I've gotten a lot of questions about refinancing lately. We've done, we've been through this process many other times with other series.
Oh, absolutely.
So this is just the next one, and then there'll be more next year.
Always looking to reduce the interest rate.
Right.
Yes.
Very good.
So there really is no action item tonight on the refunding. We've already done what I call a go-to-market resolution for this transaction. When we really started the process last April, there was a go-to-market resolution adopted at that time to authorize refunding the entire 2004 issue. And so this really is just more of an update this evening. I do have another agenda item tonight that I will be a part of that there is an action item associated with.
Okay, so this, so just to wrap this one up, we will meet in our work session on February 3rd. We'll be asking for an action to approve this at that time.
That's correct.
Okay. So let's move then on to the lease revenue, issue 9.02.
And this transaction basically represents how we receive the funding for the construction projects. The November election approved the levy that will provide for the payment to, toward this amount of money that we borrowed. And we're looking at breaking this into two pieces, and the discussion at this time is that we would borrow $25 million to fund the construction projects and then return at a later date to pick up the remaining amount. Do you want to talk about that as well?
Sure. I mentioned that any money you put in the bank is earning very, very low returns. There are certain, certain of the funds that you will need from the November election won't be, need, won't be spent for probably at least nine to 12 months. So accessing the, first of all, we don't know exactly how much the project will cost. And until we have a firm handle on all of the construction prices, to size a financing to hit that number is not possible. We do need access to funds now to pay certain requests that are being presented to the district. So we do need to go ahead and put some type of a financing in place to cover your liquidity needs. There's a very high likelihood that the projects are gonna come in at an amount at least $25 million. So we decided to go ahead and put a $25 million financing in place to cover your liquidity needs through the end of this calendar year, and then come into the market sometime in the first quarter of next year with the second financing. And at that point in time, we will know with certainty the overall construction needs of the project, and we will complete the financing package that was approved at the November election at that time. So the action item before the board tonight is go-to-market resolution authorizing George K. Baum and Company and Brian Cave to proceed forward with bringing to market a financing that will produce approximately $25 million for construction. The, we will also be talking at some point tonight about a special meeting, either the last week of February or the first week of March, where we would be in the market selling those obligations and would need a board meeting to accept those final interest rates. That would be the action that would be comparable to the action on the refunding that will occur on February 3rd. The bond market is in a very good mood right now, and so I would like to go ahead and move with due course. I think you have the need for cash, and the market is cooperating, so I would just as soon try to wrap this thing up by, you know, roughly the March 1st date and have funds in your account by probably the 15th or so of March. So that would flow with your liquidity needs. Right now, the average interest rate on the lease financing is somewhere in the low 4% range, all-in cost on a 20-year financing. And just to give you a sense, my current conservative estimate would be that on this $25 million financing, roughly 20 cents of the .36 levy that was approved would be used for this financing.
Okay. Four sevens. Sorry, never mind. It's a little over half. So we've got another not-quite-half left at some point.
A chunk of that is set aside for the technology, and then a chunk of it would be for the rest of the facility needs based on what comes in.
Based on bids.
Right. So we'll know, we'll know that information this summer, right? So then we'll know exactly what's the remainder. Is it 3 million? Is it 6 million? What is the remainder that we need to get in the first quarter of next year?
Okay, so if there are no other questions for Mr. Bricker, we do need approval for this, and there's a quite, kind of a lengthy recommended action if somebody wants to read it. I've proven I can't read tonight. Anybody want to read this? Okay, I'm gonna read this. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. I move the, the recommended action is I move the board adopt the resolution expressing the intent of the Board of Education of Liberty Public School District, number 53, Clay County, Missouri, to finance the cost of certain improvements to school facilities. My screensaver just popped up. School facilities and to reimburse costs of the project so incurred from the proceeds of the lease purchase financing, authorizing George K. Baum and Company to proceed with preparations to offer for sale lease participation certificates and authorizing and approving certain related matters and actions. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this issue? If not, Sandra?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bricker.
Thank you.
We'll follow up with you on dates for that. Could be a special meeting, but late February, early March. We want to hit the market at just the right time, so Greg will be advising us, and we'll give you information. Great?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker.
So we will circle back now to 9.01 and the district report card.
Yeah, we went over these in work session a little bit this month, but wanted to bring them to you in any more finished draft. And if you remember, we talked about, you've seen two different documents. One, that was just our KC Metro peers, and those are the peers that we really compete with on a daily basis, the districts that are most like us when we're talking about staffing and hiring and those things. And that's Lee Summit, Parkhill, and Blue Springs. And then we also have a report card that shows us a larger look at across the state of Missouri. What are the districts that are most like us demographically? And so you have a report card that shows the 15, 14 peer districts, and then we being the 15th, there's 15 of us in that, in that group. And I'll just walk you through a few of these little things. It won't take too much time, but obviously, the KC Metro score card is the first one, and district information indicators, that's just kind of characteristics and those things. You see that our, obviously, our enrollment is just a little below the peer average, but that's relative, right? Because those districts were the, Lee Summit, Blue Springs are bigger than us, but Parkhill's a little smaller. Average class size, and this gets that certified teacher minus special programs, okay? So that pulls out sped teachers because we know that class size can be manipulated a little bit. So this is regular classroom teacher, and our average throughout the entire system is 1 to 17. Our peers, those other three districts, is 1 to 18.5. So we're a little better when it comes to class size than our three peers that are most like us in this area. Average teacher experience, you see that we're a little bit younger, 11.7, as compared to the peers at 13. You'll see salary, we're at just over $50,000, and the peer average is 54.5. And if you remember, we had this discussion as part of that sustainability and attracting and retaining our work last year was to get, because even though we're 11, 11 to 11.7 for staffing, we're actually paying them like 9.7 because of the freeze. So we did a step and a half last year, and we teamed with Team Liberty as a plan to do that exact same work again this year so that we're recouping one of the steps that was lost over time, which is a good thing to get our staff more in line with our peers, because you'll see that they're once again behind when it comes to teacher salaries. Average student-teacher ratio, and that throws in the sped and the special program. So we're at 1 to 14 certified staff ratio as compared to our peers, 1 to 15. So once again, doing a little bit better than our Metro peers. And then if we look at admin ratio, we are at 1 to 272, when our peers are at 1 to 251. So we are a little more lean on the administrative side, which I don't think is a bad thing, but we have a higher student count per administrator than our peers. And then you'll see master's degrees, we're a little bit below as compared, highly qualified teacher, that's a great thing, we're at 100%. So our certification is right in line. Then you'll see our student demographics on the other side. Our white Caucasian population is almost 84%, as compared to those districts at 77%. And then you'll see all the other peers, our free and reduced percentage, 21.1%, as compared to our peers, is 25.1. So the economics of our district are a little bit different, but we're in line with the region. You'll see the length of our school day, the length of our school calendar. And then you'll get into our tax burdens, our assessed valuation. Some of those are relative to be ranked, some of them are not. You'll see that obviously we are the most state-dependent because we have that lowest assessed valuation per kid, but we have one of the highest tax rates, but it doesn't generate as much as everybody else, which is all the conversation that we had around the levy. Then you'll see our attendance rates, and what you'll see on this chart is where our average was. So we're at 94.9%, just two tenths off of our peer. And then you'll see our trend. Was that 94.9 up or down from the previous year? So this gives you an idea, did we move in the right direction. So K8, we're at 95.4, once again, just two tenths off, and trend was down just a hair. And then 912 was actually up just a hair, but we're just a little bit off our peer average there. The second page is really when we get into those student performance pieces, and we get into graduation rate, we get into math scores, we get into art scores, science and social studies scores. So you'll see a range of indicators. One of the one that obviously that we've talked a lot about that gives us greatest concern is that first column to the left, and it talks about graduation rate while it's trending, right? So you see the plus for two years, it's been moving in the right direction. It's 90.8%, which puts us fourth out of that Metro peers, and the average is 92.2. And then you'll see the same thing for our sped kids, we're fourth at 77.8 as compared to 80.7. You'll see our free and reduced kids, this is a big red flag. I mean, you see a huge gap, to be honest, between our kids that come from at-risk situations at 76.8% graduation rate as compared to our peers at 85.4. So I think we're seeing some areas that we've got to spend some targeted time talking about. And then you'll see that broken out by ethnicity. You see us number one in Hispanic graduation rate. You see us in the best number when it comes to building discipline rate. So we do pop to the top on those two things.
And what exactly does that mean?
Discipline rate is a number of occurrences, and it's a certain level of occurrence that does equalifies, and it's really severe discipline occurrence, severe, severe discipline issues. So we have fewer of those than our peers on average. Then you'll see our ACT composite, which we know we're the only district that's getting 100%. So our composite is going to be last. We expected that as, as we played out the good news. Our ACT percent above national average, it actually takes us to number two, which is an indicator of how many of our kids are scoring at, what percent of our kids are scoring at or above the national average, which is a good place to be in striving for number one, obviously. But that tells us that we're trending in the right direction, and we're very competitive when it comes to that end of the spectrum. Now, then you'll dig into the math, and I won't go each one of these, but the top one is the overall, okay? That's the district MPI, so that's a combination of all the scores below it. So if you'll see ELA, English Language Arts, we're at 388.1, we're trending up, but we're ranked third out of fourth. You'll see also on science, we're at 392. There's a pretty significant gap there. We're trending up again, but the peer average is 399.3, so about seven points off of our peers' average. And then you'll see the same thing in math, we're at 377.7, we're third, the peer average is 382.6. Then you can dig into each grade level, right? And I'm not gonna take the time, but you'll have the data, and you know what our building principles and what our leaders are talking about. And once again, we've talked about it over and over again, this is not the only indicator of success, but this is the scorecard that the state gives us and the information that says this is how you're doing as a system. I think it's important that we don't leave it at this. These are important indicators, but they're not the only indicators. We got to make sure that what we value gets measured also. And I think that's the continued conversation, Vision 2020 and some other groups of making sure that the other things that are most important, our kids' creativity, our kids' grit, you know, the book study that we've just started, their ability to be resilient and overcome. How are we gonna measure those things? Because they're not always measured in a content area score. So, and we don't want to drive too far down that road of just competing for a score, but we do have to make sure that our kids are prepared as are our peers. So this gives you an overall picture, and it gives you the easy color coding as compared to that group. And then the second sheet allows you to take a larger look. So it's seven KC districts, and it's seven St. Louis region districts, and you'll see similar things. So average class size, sorry. Average class size again, we're right at 1 to 1 to 17. The peer group for that larger group is 1 to 18.6. Our teacher experience is a little closer. We're still below on teacher salary, we're still below on admin salary. Our staff ratio, again, 1 to 14 as compared to 1, 15.2. Our admin ratio's still on the right side of the game. And then you'll see our master's degree and all of the other pieces, and you'll see once again where our student demographics look like. This one is a little closer. If you looked at the average of this group, it looks a little bit closer because we're at 83.9% majority population with the rest of the peers at 81.5, and the free and reduced rate's also similar. And then you can get into the financial factors again. But then really, the big thing again is student performance factors. So as compared to our peers on attendance rate, we're behind in each one of those areas. So we've got some opportunities to close the gap there. The graduation rate, once again, is the biggest red flag, I think. That stands out to me that out of those 15... That stands out to me that out of those 15, we're 14th, and the peer average is actually higher than our local peer average. It's 93.2 with us at 90.8. And once again, that free and reduced and sped graduation put us in 14th out of the 15 slots. So we need to do a more effective job of getting some of our students across the stage, because we have some room for improvement. And then once again, you can see where we fall on each one of the color-coded indicators. I'll answer any questions, you can read the graphs. But this is a little more clear format, you know? We had them kind of densely populated, we broke them out by category for you this time. What questions or anything that pops to your mind, or things that the executive team or myself can answer?
I don't have questions, I think we have comments more than anything. And I think we all know this, I'm just saying it out loud, but clearly, we have work to do. We have work to do. And then the other one is that in that admin, student-admin ratio, I think it's good that we're lean, and I would just trust that we don't get too lean.
Right. Something we'll monitor, but I think we're at appropriate location right now.
That can cause problems, too.
Yes, it can. I mean, it can get to a point where you can't monitor and support and those things also. But we always want to bank on teachers first. They're the most direct line of impact, and that plays out in our numbers as compared to our peers. So that's a good thing, that we have to monitor both sides of the equation. Other questions, comments?
We see these more than, more than once throughout the years.
And I'll be including some of this data in the district update in the spring. And we try to do a kind of a follow-in, a spring update, and some of this data will be filtered into the system, make sure everybody sees that we have building scorecards. You've already seen those, and this is the overall district perspective as compared to the districts that are most like us.
The rank on the statewide comparison, the very bottom, the color code chart, is that quadrants instead of rank one?
Yeah, it's exactly right, yeah. So I think the red is 12th through 15. And then it's broken into sections of four, basically.
Just to clarify on the attendance, you care about that because it does drive our funding, right?
Yeah, number one, it drives funding, right? So that's important, right? Because every percentage, full percentage point drives up the amount of money that the state sends us. So that matters for that, and we also know there's a pretty good correlation. But if you show up, there's a better chance of you learning. So not always in that scenario. Some can learn outside and already have the information, but we think we can have a bigger impact if you're with us, so we want to drive it up for that reason, as well as it doesn't hurt to have more resources, because those resources allow us to play right back into the system. So we want to drive it up so that we're putting resources in, because those resources are going to go somewhere, and they're going to the district next door if they have a better attendance percentage. Good questions?
Very good. Anything else for Dr. Jengman?
That's all in the report.
Nothing else, you can keep the floor and the report from administration.
Yeah, I'll just turn it over to academic services. I think Becky Gossett is going to present, and then Dr. Williams has a little program evaluation on the professional development side of the world for tonight, so they'll be coming together.
The program evaluation for professional, for professional development was completed with the executive directors, the director of curriculum, and the PDC, our professional development committee, district representatives. A few of the highlights, I know you've seen the document. They really have been, the PDC committee chairs have been working to revise and review the funding, budgeting, and processes for accessing the money to make sure that the professional learning impacts the classroom level. That has been their overarching work over the course of this year, and they have a full-day meeting coming up in February, so I'm excited to see how that committee with all of the teacher representatives puts that program together. To note, I was impressed that 26,800 hours of professional learning have occurred thus far. And as part of your program evaluation, you see the breakouts by building and also the respondents to each of the survey question items. If there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Becky.
I just wanted to add to that, that those are the hours that are recorded through my learning plan, which is how we capture most professional learning that's occurred, but there are other ongoing processes in buildings that aren't always recorded. All right, just, you've got our document, I believe, and just to highlight a few things from each of us, under the elementary section, you can see that the pilot has begun for the use of technology at the elementary. And this is a second pilot, obviously, or maybe even a third if you count last summer, in terms of Donovan having their big one, and then last summer, we did some things. Right now, in some second, third, and fifth grades across the district, students are using iPads and Chromebooks. In some of those settings, they will trade then, and if they began with iPads, they will use Chromebooks or the other way around. One pilot will start in February, but the others have already begun, so we're anxious to see how those things go. That will allow those students to get some information they didn't previously have the ability to get throughout their day. In the secondary section, you can see that we'll be ready to roll with a second ACT academy. And as you recall, we did that in the fall, and Marley headed that up and got great results, and so this will happen again late in March or else in April. So she's working with the crew that's coming in to do that. Under special programs, I just wanted to point out that the group that at one point we called GP RED, because there was a contract with a group that was coming in to the community, and it's a partnership between the hospital and the city and the school district and Clay County Health. And it's changed its name now, has an official title called LCHAT, which is Liberty Community Healthy Action Team. And they'll continue, this group is continuing to look at the nutrition and the activity level of kids who are 10 to 14. The whole objective is, the outcome is that we would reduce childhood obesity. And so it's a neat partnership, it's grown and gotten legs under it, and we'll be doing this, I believe I've mentioned before, that we'll be doing a survey in our middle schools this spring. That'll provide a whole new set of information to use in looking forward. So those are the major points. Oh, and you'll want to notice also what's going on with the career ed piece, and there are some dates and some list of some activities that are going on if you read through that document. Okay? Thank you.
And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Vogel. And annually, we have a human resources program evaluation, and Bob has a significant amount of information to share with you. So you've seen the document, I know it's been posted, but he's going to roll through a presentation to kind of update and then let you, and let you see the whole staffing picture of our system, and then answer any questions that you have at the end. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Vogel.
Thank you very much. And before I begin, I would like to say thank you to D. Rosecrans, Kelly Patterson, and a crew of HR specialists that worked tirelessly to pull this data together to allow me to do the in-depth analysis and interpretation that helps us improve our system. This is one of my favorite board reports of the year, because I get an opportunity to really look at where the rubber meets the road on our certificated staffing summary, and it's my delight to get to share that with you. Tonight, we're going to explore, you know, really as a new season begins, what to expect. I always get a lot of questions from applicants about what the process looks like, and I want to equip you also on what that process looks like. We're going to take a look at that process through the lens of the hiring class that is really a semester into the work of this school year. And then we're going to look at our certificated staff as a whole, not just teachers, but all certificated employees as well. Let's take a look at our applicant pool data. You may know this, but if you don't, we interview every person who applies for a job in Liberty, and that's one of the ways that we can ensure that we're taking steps toward finding the very best and brightest in our applicant pool. We, on average, in a typical year, will hire about 2% of all the people that express interest in our district, and it's a high priority to us as a team, a team of teachers, a team of administrators, a team of district employees, to ensure that we get the top 2% of that pool, not just a random 2% in that pool. So this is the process we use to do that. In order to interview every person that applies for a job in our, in our school system, we enlist the help of Gallup. Teachers take what's called a teacher insight, that's the interview for our teaching staff, support staff, take a support insight, and administrators, a principal insight interview. That's their first interview. And these statistically valid and reliable interview opportunities allow us to compare candidates who apply for a job in our system against candidates that apply for jobs all across the country. So for example, nationwide, about a quarter of a million teacher applicants begin their entrance into school districts all across the country using this same interview tool. It allows us to create what we call a line at the door. We do not hire anyone based on these results, but it does allow us to begin the process of triangulating the data, moving what we don't know about people interested in working in our system to know them as much as possible, right? We want to move the unknown to the known as much as possible. So this line at the door allows us to start with those who answer most of the questions like the way we want these questions answered, and we start with that population. A little bit about how this entry set of data compares, we have this kind of trend application-wise in our school system, and you see that, that the trend is certainly an upward trend, but I want you to notice, applications per year, and this is applications, which is different than applicants, because we do have people who apply for more than one job. But you see an enormous spike in applications submitted here, and it's been trailing off, and this is, you know, what we know as the Great Recession. This was when unemployment spiked very high, and as a result, obviously, a lot of people were looking for work, and we saw the fruit of that. It's starting to taper down. It's still higher than pre-recession levels, but it's going in the right direction. If we break that down and look at just elementary applicants, we see that same spike occur, but we're starting to see that taper off. This is by far our largest applicant pool. You're looking at, you know, 800, almost 900 applications. We typically see, you know, over 1,000 applications. We'll hire, you know, maybe about 20. So that gives you a feel for what that, that population looks like. All other certificated applications per year, you see that same spike trend, and it's trending downward as well. That's a good sign. I think that's a sign that the economy is recovering, certainly in our profession. It's a good sign for applicants in the pool. It's, you know, comes with mixed emotion on our side, because we want to have a very robust pool to choose from. You'll see that we, you know, even though these numbers are coming down, we do have a very robust pool. This spreads out, all of the, all of the applicants who are interested in applying in our district by when they apply, and you see, obviously, February, January, February, March, April, these are our significantly high months for applications. But I also want you to see the reason why we try to strike when the iron is hot. Of these applicants that apply per month, the total who are above the national average is obviously highest, and then the total who are in the top quarter nationally, above 75% of the pool, is also highest during the same window. So that we're highly motivated to do this, and that's why this is really what is referred to as our hiring season here in Liberty. And if you look at how that breaks out in terms of our hiring decisions, this is last year's cohort, you see that 77% of all of our hiring took place during this hiring season. 89% of all our hires took place during the school year, and a very small percentage was actually hired over the summer months. And a lot of times, those hirings that happen in the summer are because life happens, and we have employees who need out of their contracts for spousal transfers or whatnot. And so we do inherently always have some hiring that needs to take place in the summer months. But our goal is to get that done as much as possible during the peak availability of our applicants, when our applicant pools are strongest. Now let me show you what our applicant pool looked like last year, for those that we hired, to show you what striking when the iron is hot does for us. This is how our hiring pool, okay, of our 56 individuals that we hired, 45 of them are 81% actually outperformed the national average of that quarter of a million individuals that, that entered their applicant process using the Gallup teacher insight. So 81% of our hires were above that national mean. And then if you look at the population of our hires above the top 25%, in other words, better than 75% of the applicants nationally, you see that about half of our hires were outperforming the top 75% of the nationwide applicant pool, according to Gallup. So that's good data for us. It tells us that moving quickly and striking when the iron is hot does pay off for a district in getting those best and brightest through the process and into, into Liberty Public Schools. If you break that out, strength of pool, strength of the pool by reason, individuals when they apply identify the reason that they're applying, and you see that our strongest populations, that's the near 60%, come from people who seek out Liberty Public Schools based on a word-of-mouth referral. And oftentimes, this comes from people who are currently employed in the district, who have friends who are looking for teaching jobs, and through word-of-mouth, they're told about applying in our district. And a very strong segment of that population cites that as a reason for coming to the district. Reputation of the district is by far the largest, and again, near 60% of that population is outperforming the national average. And then job fairs, and I want to elucidate that a little bit. By job fairs, you know, we used to, many years ago, go to job fairs, and we'd stand out in front of a table and just meet people at random. Job fairs anymore involve a process where people are selecting to interview with school districts that are coming to these job fairs, and so people are seeking out to, to interview with Liberty at these job fairs, and then turning around and applying for jobs. This is a very robust population of individuals that are outperforming that national mean. I want to point out that of this population that applies, here's the number we actually hired from each of these. And so you see, our largest population of hires came out of this group who sought out the district because of the reputation. Our two highest areas of hire come out of both of these areas, where the population in that pool in general is already pretty high. The average result on that first interview for these groups outperformed the mean on average. 72 is the national mean. So on average, that 250,000 population of teachers that apply, 50% of them will score 72 on the teacher insight. 78 and above is the cut score for that top 25% or that top quartile. And you'll see that all of our hires that we had, the average TI was at the national average or better, and the largest segment of the population that we hired performed in that top 25% on average. So that's a, you know, a good snapshot at the very, the very beginning of that funneling process as we seek out the best and brightest in the applicant pool. So let's take a deeper look at that new hire class, that population. We're going to expand the window to 75, not just those who take the teacher insight, but really all certificated staff. You've got admin in here, and you've got some special services that are non-teacher roles as well. And I want to look at those by segment of the population. If we look at the elementary population, you see we hired mostly at the fifth-grade level. 10 of our 23 elementary new hires are serving in, in fifth grade, and 11 there at the upper elementary. As far as special services go, 11 out of the 16 are in the classroom as special education teachers. We also hired three speech-language pathologists, a school psych, and an occupational therapist. And then if you look at subject-specific, this is primarily on secondary level, sixth grade through 12th, you see that most of our hires of the 25, seven of them were in math, and that's not uncommon. Usually, math and science are high, high-demand areas, but you see here, math and English Language Arts were our two highest for those subject-specific or secondary positions that we hire. And then others, we have our admin counselor and in-school suspension or focus room teachers as well. Degrees by state, this is always something that I like to look at, where are we finding most of our quality talent? You know, we, we see by the profile of who we hire that we really are hiring the best and brightest in that applicant pool, and it's also encouraging to see that that best and brightest that we're hiring vastly come from colleges and universities in the state of Missouri. That's where they have their degrees from, by and large. Kansas is second. And that really is fairly close to the trend overall. If we go to, we expand that window to 2006 through 2014, you see very little change in this population. Still, most of our hires come from Missouri colleges and universities. Our colleges and universities in the state of Missouri do a very good job preparing teacher candidates for, for this profession. Certificated trends, I'm going to expand this window even further, not just look at our new hires, but all certificated staff. This is our profile. If we go all the way back to the 1991 school year for, for FTE, you see, obviously, it's expanding, our student population is expanding as well. But I want to draw your attention that even though it's growing, you're seeing the numbers really taper off here in this window and even start to drop down, and that's because we're, we're hiring at a much slower rate now than our student population is growing, and we're allowing those, you know, those FTEs to drop off. The reconfiguration here obviously led to a lot of that reduction. Still very, very high, but, but is dipping off a little bit and kind of plateauing here in the, in these last few years. If you look at the experience trend of that population, you see that this is total teaching experience, not just in Liberty, but anywhere from 2004, '05 to 2014. You see that our populations of people with limited teaching experience is dropping, while what would be defined as our veteran teachers, teachers who come with rich past experiences. experiences as classroom teachers, is growing significantly, and you see that 11- to 20-year timeframe is really spiking the most there. That's encouraging. It means that we're seeing people come to us with a lot of teaching experience, wanting to come and make their career here in Liberty Public Schools. And as you recall, a few years back, it was this segment of our population in our teacher salary schedule that we were seeing the least amount of interest because it was, it lacked the most competitiveness in terms of salaries. We're starting to see that trend change, and that's a good thing for our kids. If you look at Liberty teaching experience only, this is just people who are teaching here in Liberty. The population who are beginning their teaching experience in Liberty is declining, and that means that we're hiring fewer people each year, and our hiring classes are dropping down quite a bit. 56 this year. When I started in 2008, we had 140 that we hired in a new hiring class. That was this year here, this '08-'09 school year. So, you see a downward trend, and that is reflective of our hiring. It's also reflective of our retention. Our folks who are here in the district are staying with us, and that's encouraging as well. You see, again, that teachers in that veteran window, six to 10 years, 11 to 20 years, they're staying with us, and so, and again, this is just Liberty teaching experience. Our staff is growing, and that's a sign of retention as our staff chooses to make a career. That's the highest honor of any school system, is that people who come into a system want to make their career with us. We value that as a school district, and we, as a result, we value promoting as much as possible the retention of our employees in order to achieve that. If you look at our education level by year, this shows, again, a trend over time where our population of certificated employees is growing in their master's degree and above. We're seeing fewer and fewer people with just a bachelor's degree. This is encouraging because it paints a picture of a staff that values higher education. They value the role of continuous learner, lead learner. I'm very encouraged by that. Our population is almost 80% now with the masters and above. Now, if you saw on our report card that Dr. Jungen presented earlier, the numbers were around 73%. And I want to point that out because it looks like we've got different sets of number. I'm looking at the certificated staff as a whole, and many of our administrator positions, our curriculum positions, instructional coach positions require a minimum of a master's degree. So, when you dilute that pool by pulling all of that population in, you're going to see a larger percentage, but what I'm interested in here is the trend over time, and that is indicative of a staff that is choosing to go back to school, to continue to learn, to continue to be lead learners in their classrooms. That's very encouraging for our school system. If you look at our retention rate, as I mentioned earlier, a large part of the reason why we're seeing smaller populations in that beginning Liberty teaching window, and we're increasing in the six-to-20-year window in terms of population with a Liberty Public Schools teaching experience. A lot of that is indicative of the fact that our employees are sticking with us. This trend is growing. Last two years, we've had a 93% return rate among our certificated staff. That's very encouraging. Anything over 90% is really good. If you look at our peer school systems, a 90% retention rate is a rate that shows a lot of focus on retention, on staff staying with the school system. That's a good sign, and we've seen that really since the mid-2000s on, that level of retention rate. So, that's very encouraging to us as well as we look at that data. For staff that do leave us, we are interested in finding out the reasons why they're choosing to leave Liberty Public Schools. We value that. That information, this slice of the pie, is much larger than it has been in years past, and as you recall, last year, we did offer that incentive for folks who were eligible to participate in the public school retirement system, to take advantage of the early separation incentive. So, that population is growing a little bit. And then you see other, what I would consider pull reasons. We always look at retention in terms of pull and push reasons. Pull reasons are reasons that, you know, people are leaving for better opportunities. Push reasons are reasons of dissatisfaction when people leave, and we obviously want to, you know, cause that to be as low as possible and work toward creating the kind of work environment that makes people want to stay here, want to make their career here. I believe we do that. We do offer an early notification incentive. This is something we've done every year for the last several years to incent people who know that they're leaving to notify us as early as possible so that we can begin striking while the iron is hot, you know, if we talked about that window of time when most of our applicants are available. We had eight individuals take advantage of our early notification incentive program, and this is how it breaks down for us this year. And so, we, obviously, we're still getting people who are notifying us early, not because of this incentive, but because they know that they aren't coming back, and they know the value of letting their principals know as early as possible. Kids win when we can get those positions filled as early as possible. That's a very quick snapshot in our staffing summary. Again, I thank my team for pulling that data together and allowing us to really dive in and analyze and interpret the implications of this, find those positive correlations and those signs, and I'm delighted to share that with you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have one question.
Yes.
And it's back on page 24.
Okay.
It's the one with the Liberty teaching experience trend.
Yeah.
This is one of those graphs that's a little misreading because it looks like anything going down is a bad thing, anything going up is a good thing, but they have to add to 100, so when one goes down, the other has to go up, and vice versa.
And when I see this, what I interpret this to mean is that a lot of this is the result of retention, and you see that in that 93%, 92% over the last several years because you're right. Obviously, people graduate as time goes on, graduate into these levels by staying here. If we had high turnover and we're hiring people, you know, in this probationary window, because everybody comes into the district probationary, right? If you've got 20 years of teaching experience, you come to Liberty as a probationary teacher. If we had high, high turnover, we're going to have a lot of people here. You'll see that trending up, you'll see this trending up, and these trending down. So, this graph really is telling in terms of a correlation of retention. Retention is something we value significantly because it means our employees are wanting to make their career here in Liberty.
It doesn't mean that teachers who have three to five years' experience are leaving Liberty.
Doesn't mean that at all. It means they're...
They're coming.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to...
Because these are trending upward, we're seeing these people moving into these categories. I'm glad you brought that clarification to the front. This is a very encouraging piece of data for us in terms of employees desiring to stay and make their home here in Liberty.
I thought I had talked myself into that explanation.
Yeah, you're exactly right. This one speaks really to the profile of who we're hiring, right? Who we're hiring. That's people who are coming in with experience. The one with Liberty is, we're talking, that is indicative of retention. Any other questions? If I can close with just one final thing, since Shay is here. I had a conversation with Shay a few years ago where she did decide to leave, to stay home, and it broke my heart because she was in a school that my kids are feeding into. We do lose staff from time to time, and when we do, it warms my heart that they choose to stay in our community and make our community home. That says a lot to, obviously, their valuing of their time here as a teacher and our school system, that iron-sharpening iron collaborative effect that quality teachers have, and the fact that she and her husband want to stay in our community and raise their kids here really says something about the quality of staff that we're able to bring to our kids every day.
Good. No more questions? Thank you, Dr. Vogel. Great report, and I thank you to your team.
Yes.
And we'll turn it over to Ms. Embry for the finance and operations report.
Thank you, Dr. Jungen. Provided the standard information for you, as we always do, with regard to where we are fund balance-wise for the year. Just want to highlight for you again that in the current year, we're approximately 3.5 million short in terms of state funding on the formula, but if the formula were truly at the state adequacy target that it was originally intended, that represents a shortfall in Liberty Public Schools this year of $10.6 million. So, we're always hopeful. We do see that paration factor eking up, if you will, but very slowly, and we'll continue to watch that and keep you apprised of any major changes that are coming our way. As always, and in accordance with board policy, we have one donation that we need to publicly acknowledge, and this particular donor wishes to remain anonymous, but we received $500 for the Liberty North High School Vocal Music Department. And just for your information, I do send a personal thank-you letter to anyone who provides a donation. This past month, I had an opportunity to attend the Kansas City TIF meeting, and I'd like to thank Mr. Abbott again for often attending those meetings that occur in his building, so he saves me a trip downtown Kansas City sometimes, but the business was very short-order, and approval of a $100,000 allocation that was supported by the Shoal Creek TIF advisory for the tree replacement program was provided, and there is an agreement that actually needs to be approved, and that will likely be approved at the next meeting. I did receive an email this morning, I believe, or no, maybe it was yesterday, no, Friday, last week. Has to do with a Liberty TIF Commission meeting that is coming up, and they're looking to schedule a meeting either March 13th, 19th, or 20th, kind of floating out some dates, and it is for an amendment to the Blue Jay project or the Clayview project. The city council wanted to wait until the developer had a tenant for the remaining five acres, and that apparently has moved forward, and so they're looking to schedule a meeting for the Liberty TIF Commission. And I provided you information in the Friday update about the City of Liberty and some tax abatements that they're working on, and I'd like to revisit those. They have a Chapter 353 tax abatement for commercial property. This was relative to the abatement program that was adopted by the city council back in May of 2011, and this adds, what happens is they, each time they need to add a particular address, they bring it back forward for the whole document and make an amendment to that. So, this provides for an amendment or 14 East Franklin to be added, and that will result in a 100% tax abatement for 10 years, and will basically cover the cost of the improvement. And there are a number of restrictions and expectations provided with that. The second project is a Chapter 100 abatement for equipment, and this actually is good news. The company is Rock Ten, and this is not only providing them with an opportunity to expand their operation, and will still get 50% of the tax revenue for that new equipment, but it's retaining that business in our community, and that's a big win for all of us. So, we're looking to receive an additional amount of revenue of $81,466 is the estimate for 2015, and then over the 10-year period, it would be just under $500,000 that we would receive in additional revenue for that particular abatement. So, Nutrition Services, I included just a blurb in here about the fact that the United States Department of Agriculture has permanently lifted the regulations setting the maximums for protein and grains, and they had provided a temporary lift of that, and we took advantage of that in our operation since 2012. But this provides for some additional calories and opportunities for students to have a combination of foods that were otherwise restricted in terms of the breads, the combination of the breads, and so we'll just continue to watch what we're providing and provide the healthiest menu we possibly can. Our Nutrition Services staffs are very diligent in ensuring that we're complying with all the regulations, but also want to make our kiddos happy as well, and providing clean labels, that's a big thing. Have provided you some brief information with regard to the construction update in each of the sites, and as you know, the first project in the queue is getting the paint and carpet at the Blue Jay Tower on third and fourth floors finished, and that is progressing very quickly, and as it well should, since we need to move out of here at the end of this month, out of, at the end of February, rather. And we have staging fences. You've probably seen those in that area, in the community, at our four elementary sites, Lewis &amp; Clark, Warren Hills, Shoal Creek, and Kelly Brook. And we do have a construction trailer at Liberty High School and also at Warren Hills Elementary to provide for the construction crews. And at Lewis &amp; Clark, we've broken ground to get that footing work started there. At Warren Hills, we had some electrical that needed to be moved in order to make way for the construction that takes place in between those wings. And then the design work continues for Liberty North and Liberty High School. We'll be providing you with information with regard to the bidding process and those dates and what we can expect on that. And as we've discussed, there's been significant design work for what will take place here at Epic, as well as the review of that by the Elementary Innovations Task Force that occurred last week. We talked today already about the sale of the lease revenue bonds that will fund all projects, and other than that, everything is moving along very well. I will be updating for you the construction schedule, as well as beginning to provide you with some pictures so that you can watch the progress from the comfort of your home. And a couple of other notes with regard to construction news, and these are things that are outside of our scope, but we posted for your view the building permit information that the City of Liberty has provided us, as well as the City of Kansas City, and while there's nothing significant to report, there are some favorable numbers coming our way, so that's good as compared to last year. And then also, I provided for you Aaron Schmidt, who is the Director of Planning with Hutt Midwest, continues to provide us with an update on 104 Street, and that has really moved along quite well, anticipating completion of that very soon. That was an update as of January 30th. That concludes my report. If you have any questions for me.
Questions?
Can't believe how fast the building stuff is moving.
I know. We've...
That's a good thing.
It is. A lot of meetings, a lot of discussions have taken place behind the scenes.
Yep. Good.
Lot of work.
Lot of work, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Embry. Superintendent's report, you saw, obviously, my posted document. I'll cover just two or three or a few things real quick. One document that was included is the, just for your information, I thought you might need some casual reading, the CEE Trust Evaluation Document. I know you're seeing a ton of information in the media around the transfer issue and what's going to happen with Casey Mo. This is the presentation that was made to the State Board last week of the outside consultant as a potential solution. Now, this, as well as a plan created by local educators and superintendents and other constituencies are all in Desi's hands, and it's their baby to do what they want. So, we'll continue to monitor what that means for us, and as we get the opportunity to provide input, we will. But the understanding is there'll be some additional meetings where they can seek feedback from state organizations, as well as public, as they create their plan for the future for how to deal with unaccredited, and it's not just Kansas City and Missouri, it's unaccredited districts across the state, whether that be Normandy or River View Gardens, who are also unaccredited and always already experienced in the transfer issue. So, that gives you just a little bit of a synopsis of an outside-of-the-state potential solution of what that could look like. Other things, one document that was real important, and Dr. Williams referred to this, is the assessment memo, and this, I just forwarded you the exact memo that Desi sent us last week, and I think it, for one of the first times, I think it's some good news on the assessment front, actually. This was a dialogue that happened between many constituencies, that be the teachers' associations, the principals' associations, the superintendent's association, school board's association, and the department about the assessment plan and the assessment footprint for kids. There's been a significant amount of concern about the number of assessments that were going to be given, as well as how that was going to grow and the number of hours that that was going to take, and potentially, you know, the test prep culture that that creates in your systems. So, that pushback, as well as price tag, I think had a little bit to do with it, created an opportunity to have a new conversation. That new conversation started back well before Christmas with the department, with a coalition of educational organizations, and resulted in a new recommendation in front of the State Board last week that they actually approved, which is a different assessment plan than what was scheduled to go into place next year. It will still use some smarter-balanced assessments, but it's not full-blown smarter-balance like was planned, and it actually reduces the footprint, okay? Because the plan was, and if you'll just look at the first page, it kind of gives you, and you can look at all the slides if you want, but the first page summarizes, so it reduces the amount of time spent on state assessments as compared to this year by 19%, which is a move in the right direction instead of the opposite. It was actually in planning to go up significantly the number of hours because of the end-of-course high school exams, the additional end-of-high-school exams that were going to go up. So, this allows for more instructional time, which we've been saying for a long time, that you're killing the instructional environment by adding so many of these assessments. It also provides for unlimited local access to formative assessments, which we know is the real tool that drives instructional improvement. That's the day-to-day opportunity for teachers to get feedback from kids on small assessments. So, this allows the teacher to get more information about how do I adjust for the kids? And it provides a digital library of resources for teachers to create their own, which it's... And it provides a digital library of resources for teachers to create their own, which it's nice to have access to those things. So that will be an opportunity. It also funds, and this is an interesting move, one administration of the ACT. As you know, we made that move a year ago and first implementation this year, one of only a few districts in the state of Missouri that's giving full implementation now. The state would actually be paying for that ACT for every kid in the state of Missouri, which means that clears our data issue up because we'll actually have comparables and everybody will be playing the same game. It would be given at the junior year. It would not be included in the evaluation process of IMSIP, okay? So the evaluation part of IMSIP is that percent that are scoring at the national average or above. So it's not necessarily going to say that your total composite is going to be in the evaluation. They'll still be using the other assessments as that evaluation piece, but it does allow for us to get a better feel on how are our kids college and career ready across the state and the state would be administering that. It provides, I think, one of the things that the state's targeting is comparability, right? Because it's hard to get a real comparison test and they wanted a test at the high school level that allows them to benchmark against other states our performance and there isn't one, but that exists right now. They were going to go with the end-of-high-school exams, they were more expensive, more comprehensive, and really didn't provide much incentive for kids because that end-of-high-school exam doesn't tie to anything next in my life. ACT may not also, but it does for a lot of kids. So it's got a little bit more accountability for students, I think. So that's in their recommendation. It maintains our current end-of-course structure and as Dr. Williams talked about, they had planned to add end-of-courses and some of our course redesign was around making sure that our kids were ready for the assessment plan that was going to be put in place so that we were not hamstringing our system and our kids on performance areas. But some of those are changing. The pending thing in this whole thing is this has been approved by the state board, but it hasn't been approved by the legislature. And they don't approve the plan, but they approve the cash, okay? So we've got a few months of discussions of the budget, well, relative to whether or not this plan can proceed forward. Some change is going to happen because the state's contract for assessment is up at this point. So they are going to have to get a new contract for assessment. This is their new recommendation. It brings the price tag down based on what they, the original projection was, an eighteen million dollar increase in assessment costs across the state. This brings it down by three point five million, so it's down to a fourteen million dollar increase. They knew it was going to go up just because the contract was up, it's old contract. Assessment prices are going up, especially when you're buying formative for the entire state, which means that those that are spending money on formatives in their current budget can actually take that cost out of their structure and the state will be providing that. So those are some of the big things, the quick results, quick turnaround for districts is also something that we've been asking for and they've been trying to improve over and over again over the years and this results in a quicker turnaround for data. Maintains federal compliance, which is a big piece that the state has targeted because all of our Title I funds, all of our federal funds, if you don't remain compliant, then they stop sending those potentially. At least that's always the threat. I don't know if they would do it, but I'm guessing sooner or later they might. So this remains compliance with the assessment expectation at the federal level. And like I said, reduces the overall budget by three point five million from the original request and then you can go into all the slides. But I think it's, I think it's a good move for the state to say, we get it, we've had enough feedback that says we're testing kids to death, we're putting way too much on these summative assessments and we know that real improvement happens when teachers are given good formative tools and are able to adjust the daily instruction, not just wait for that big, high-stakes test at the end. So I think it's a good move, reduces a substantial amount of increased funding in for education. Will that all play out? No, whatever he puts in won't play out. This is the sausage-making process of compromise that will happen for the next few months. One of the bigger concern areas for us, as it's already started this process, is that the general assembly, and I think it's the House and the governor's office typically agree on a consensus revenue estimate for the upcoming year that says, this is what we see is going to be available for revenue. And just about, I think, only once in twenty years have they not agreed on this as the number. Well, this year, they didn't agree. So the number that the governor's functioning from and the number that the House and general assembly's functioning from are two different starting points. So you can see the conversation begin at that point. So what, he'll make a proposal, which we hope fills some of the gap that Ms. Embry spoke of, that is the seven percent funding shortage that we're currently at, which is somewhere between three and ten million dollars, depending on how the adequacy target's calculated. We need those resources. We know that the levy helped fill the gap, some of the gap, and we would love to be able to have some resources come in from the state and help offset some of those things. But we've got to wait a little bit to see how's the process play out in legislature and then there's always the risk of whatever the legislature passes, does the money actually come in? So we have to have a lot of conversations about, did they pass a realistic budget based on the consensus revenue estimates and what we see happening in the economy as we form our budget this summer? And then what are we going to do as we expect these, or do we expect these things to land in our system? Because we know they can't overspend. So what happens at the end of the next year is if the estimates didn't get reached, we get withholdings, right? Significant withholdings and that's happened in the past. So we have to be intelligent as we go through the budgeting process and see what's realistic, what we can do and what we can't. And the other thing's big on the legislative process, it's going to be about resources, it's going to be about transfers. Those are the two big pieces. And a little bit of this assessment discussion, but that will fall into the resource dialogue, I think, for the most part. So I'll keep you updated as we go. I think I'll be at the legislative session that MSBA puts on next month. I don't know if anybody else signed up or not. I know a couple were considering. So if you're still interested, let me know and we'll continue to have good contact with our local legislators and go from there. Couple other things on professional development. EdCamp Liberty, I sent out a little bit of information about that. It was an exciting event, happened just over a week ago at Liberty North, nearly two hundred educators from nineteen districts volunteering their time on a weekend to come in and say, how do we get better at our craft? And it was just kind of fun to be a part of. It's a different kind of conference. It's not, you know, we post the script and everybody comes based on what the script is. The script is posted by the educators that show up in the door, show up in the doors and they create the conference based on that in the morning. Say, here's what I have to share, here's what I want to learn about. They create the conference schedule and everybody gets to shift and move and it's not, you got to sit here for fifty minutes, you got to sit here for fifty minutes. If you're here for ten and you want to move, move. You can hit three sessions at one time and it's encouraged to do so. So I would just say thank you to, and I can't name them all, so I won't even try, but to all of our local educators that created it. And it was our teachers, our administrators that went to a Kansas City EdCamp experience just a few months ago and said, we need to do that in Liberty. We need to lead the way in a new professional development experience that's full of energy and it's really put on by teachers and I think it played out perfectly. So we look forward to seeing that happen again in the future. There's one coming up in St. Louis. They're popping up all across the state and country, so. And you can follow them on social media, Twitter and other places. It's kind of interesting that even if you can't attend, you can follow the conversations that are happening on a regular basis there. Leadership Series, you saw a document in there also, just wanted to keep you in the loop as we continue to work on development of leadership. We offer a series in the spring and one in the fall, started that last year and that's the expectation of continual growth for our leadership team based on what they say their needs are. And there's course offerings and everybody will be expecting to attend at least one of those in the spring and they'll be put on, for the most part, by our local administrators offering their areas of expertise to collaborate with the rest of the team. So we're excited about that. Website update, hopefully you've got some good feedback. I know a few of you have pushed back information to me and I know Dallas and Trey and others in the system have received a lot of good feedback about the new website. We've been working on that project behind the scenes, not we, not me, Dallas and Scott Heeky and Trey and their team for several months behind the scenes and gave us an updated look as well as made sure, because the old process that we were using, we didn't have the ability to support anymore. So we had no choice but to transition and I think they put together a good product for the patrons and it's still in formation phase. Well, I tell you, we're just getting started. We've got some more things to build and put out there, but I think it's much improved. Final two things, website up, or that was a website update, book study we chose at the work session. I think it's important to share with the community that the board chose How Children Succeed as they're reading, as they model professional growth at this table and we'll be discussing Chapter One as we come back together for the February work session. So if you haven't started your reading, get to it. You've got homework to do. I've started some of it, it's really intriguing, I think. And the last thing, Northland Caps, I would just like to pass on. I don't know if anybody was at the Northland Chamber Awards Banquet on Saturday night, but Northland Caps received an award. Dr. Todd White kind of received it for the entire group, for exemplary leadership and this innovative program. So it's a celebration of all the six districts that are partnering to take on this endeavor and recognized by the Northland Chamber last week. So appreciate your support of that program, I think. The things that we hear and see mean that it's going to have some larger and larger impacts very soon and we hope to have Donna Deans here in the next month or two to give us an individual report from her perspective as she takes over the helm of that program. That is...
Very good. Any questions for Dr. Jungman? If not, the next set of meetings is listed for you there. Just a note, we have a work session February third here. Our next business meeting will be February eighteenth, that's a Tuesday here, and that is our last meeting in this building and we will be shifting to Blue Jay Tower at that point, so.
Different.
Moving right along. The other thing to mention, by the time this hits the airwaves, it'll be too late, but tomorrow, five o'clock, is candidate file closing for anybody that is looking to run for school board. And do we have any board committee reports? No, quiet. Board remarks? Are they going to fight to make the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? For the discussion, Sandra.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are adjourned.